Item eighteen. Declaration of Stage One Water Supply Condition and Amendment to Legal Services Agreement for Water Rights Legal Services. Recommendation, the Council, A, adopt by reading of title only a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara declaring a Stage One Water Supply Condition and repealing Resolution Number seventeen dash seventeen, and B, authorize the city administrator to amend a professional services agreement with Barkerwicks, Ronan, sorry, Cronick and Shanahan, Contract Number twenty-two eight-ten, and increase the amount of the contract by one-hundred-thousand for a total contract amount of three-hundred thousand for specialized water rights-related legal services.
Thank you. Ms. Dyer, whenever you're ready.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of the council. My name's Kelly Dyer. I'm the Water Supply Manager, and I'll be discussing the declaration of the Stage One Water Supply Condition and Amendment to Water Rights Legal Services Agreement. So first, we'll go over the drought status and water demand status, the status of each of our water supply sources. We'll review water supply planning and the strategy, talk about the water rights legal services, and then we'll be giving a recommendation. So drought status, rainfall for the year has been above normal, and as of April eighth, we've had about thirty-two inches at Gibraltar Reservoir, almost twenty-five inches at Kachuma Reservoir, and about twenty-three inches in downtown Santa Barbara. And this is our updated federal drought monitor. It's prepared by federal agencies, and for the first time, we are no longer in the drought category according to the drought monitor. This is based on broad-scale conditions. It's also based on climate conditions. It does not reflect the water, local water supply condition. We have just experienced the seven driest consecutive years on record, historic drought, and while the climate conditions have improved, some of our water supplies can take several years to recover from the drought, and I'll be discussing that further in the presentation. So our demand status, we had a thirty-five percent reduction in water demands for the month of February. That's compared with pre-drought twenty thirteen February demands, and our twelve-month running average is thirty percent reduction, which is right on target with the conservation target in the Stage Three emergency. Water supply status, we have Gibraltar Reservoir is full and still spilling, so that's about four-three-hundred acre-feet of water. The water quality was quite challenging after the large storm events. We had high turbidity and organic matter that really spiked, so we did have to shut down diversions temporarily. Those diversions have resumed, and actually, the water quality is very good right now with the additional inflows that we've been getting. It's kind of flushed the reservoir through, and so we have nice water quality at Gibraltar. Kachuma is about eighty percent full. It's a hundred-and-fifty-three thousand. Of that amount, the city's stored Kachuma supply is about fifteen thousand acre-feet. About half of it, well, six thousand seven hundred of that is carryover, which is water saved from previous years that we were counting on to use in future years. And then we did have an allocation adjustment for the 2019 water year, so we now have eight-thousand two-hundred-and-seventy-seven acre-feet per year. That's a one-hundred percent allocation increased from the previous twenty percent initial allocation. So the process for that, on March first, the Kachuma member units jointly requested a one-hundred percent full allocation for the current water year of 2019. On March thirteenth, on behalf of the Kachuma member units, the Santa Barbara County Water Agency submitted the request for the full allocation. And just a point of clarification, the Santa Barbara County Water Agency is not a water purveyor. They don't have water customers, but they are the master contract holder for the Kachuma project. So this is really an administrative action. The Kachuma member units receive all the water supply and pay for all the water, but we submit our request to the county water agency as an administrative action, and then they submit it to the Bureau of Reclamation, who has the discretionary authority on approving the allocation. On March twenty-sixth, we did receive approval from the Bureau of Reclamation for the full one-hundred percent allocation for the current water year. So that is, for the first time in many years, that we've had a one-hundred percent allocation. This chart shows our Kachuma storage. The black line is the last major drought in the nineteen eighty-six to ninety-three period, and the green line was our current drought. And so we're currently at about one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand acre-feet of storage, and you can see with the storms that we had this year, we gained about almost a hundred thousand acre-feet of storage. So there's a substantial increase in inflows. It's not full. It's not spilling, and it is a shared resource. So not all of those inflows belong to the Kachuma member units. There's other accounts, such as downstream water rights, that some of the water belongs to. And we don't know what's going to happen in subsequent years. We're always planning for continued dry conditions. If dry conditions return, Kachuma may drop below a hundred thousand within a couple of years, and then we would again be facing reduced water allocations. So imported water, we currently have a seventy percent allocation. That's twenty-three hundred acre-feet for the city. However, we currently do not have the ability to receive state water at Kachuma. This is due to the biological opinion concerns. We had installed a temporary bypass during the drought to avoid mixing of the state water with Kachuma water for fish releases. That bypass had to be taken out with the rising lake levels. We have been, CCWA is the agency that's been working with the Bureau of Reclamation to try and resolve the issue, although we have not heard from Reclamation an approval to either install a modified bypass or to resolve the issue with their delivery system to Hilton Creek, which is another potential option. But there are a couple avenues being pursued, and we hope that state water deliveries can be restored. The city had not been planning on sending deliveries at this time, but there are other agencies who would rely on it. Supplemental water, we no longer are pursuing supplemental water purchases for this year for our own demands. However, we are looking at opportunities to pay down some of our water debt, whether that's with our state water allocation or potentially buying water from other agencies to send to AVEC and Mojave are the two agencies that we owe water to. We currently owe about thirty-seven hundred acre-feet of water debt. Groundwater levels, we continue to monitor on a monthly basis, and we are seeing that our groundwater levels are low. They are similar to where they were after the last major drought. And based on our observations of water levels, we saw that after we stopped pumping, it took about ten years for the water levels to recover. So right now, we are currently resting our basins. We are not pumping from them. We have one well that was scheduled for maintenance that we'll be pumping for a few months this summer for some cleaning, but other than that, we are not planning to run the wells. And we're also working on a pilot study for what's called Aquifer Storage and Recovery. This would be a pilot project where we would take water off of our distribution system and inject it into our wells to try and help the recovery, accelerate the recovery process. Our desalination plant continues to operate in full production. It is a critical part of the city's water supply, not only during the drought, but it's also helpful in drought recovery because it's an alternative source that helps us to rest our groundwater basins, for example. And our recycled water plant currently has a limited capacity of one-point-seven MGD. That's less than the designed capacity of three MGD, and we are working through legal remedies to address those capacity issues. The plant is currently online, and it's meeting all of the customer demands on the system. So our water supply strategy is based on the city's adopted long-term water supply plan. It was adopted in 2011, and we'll be looking to initiate an updated long-term water supply plan in the next fiscal year. But the document is really, it's a strategy document that looks at our plan through 2030. It's a long-term plan that outlines policies for supply and demand management, and it serves as our drought planning document. And in that plan, our demands are projected to go down over time through 2030, and it was also based on a design drought from the forties and fifties period, which turns out is now the second worst drought in history. Even though we had made some assumptions on available water supply in that plan that didn't turn out to come into fruition in the current drought, our surface waters were much less than any prior period. We were able to use the document to adaptively manage our supplies, and it was based on current conditions but following the policies of the plan. So it was really important that we had that plan in place prior to going into the drought. We have also a water shortage contingency plan, which is a required state plan, and it outlines three stages of water shortage, stages one, two, and three, and I will go into those later in the presentation. And before I go into our water supply outlook, I wanted to talk about our water demands through drought cycles. And so this chart shows our water demands going back to the nineteen eighties, and you can see during the last drought, there was a dramatic decline in water use. And then after the drought ended, demands slowly recovered, but they never really went back to the levels they were before the drought. They were about twenty percent lower, and that's because people made permanent changes in their water use, either changing out their landscaping or their irrigation systems or changes in behavior. And here we are in the current drought where we had a dramatic decline in water use, and we're anticipating something similar where we don't expect the demands to go back to what they were before the drought. And so as we look at our supply planning, which is how do we use our supplies to meet our demands, we have two scenarios that we'll be looking at. One is based on demands that would return to about fifteen percent lower than the 2013 pre-drought demands, and the second is a full return to the pre-drought demands, which we don't expect to happen, but we're looking at it from a supply planning perspective and for consistency with our long-term water supply plan. So this is the first scenario, and I'll start from the top. Actually, let me just say, we've had, the first seven years are what actually happened in the last drought. This is our supplies over the drought period. We're currently in year eight, and we're planning for the next three years. And so from the top, we've assumed we'd have a fifteen percent reduction from pre-drought demands, and that extraordinary conservation would continue. The orange is state water, so we'd have very limited use of state water. Groundwater is very limited. We would not need to use our groundwater in this scenario. We'd have the desalination plant operating. We'd have Gibraltar, this is Gibraltar supply for this year, but then we assume dry conditions continue in subsequent years, so there would be limited Gibraltar supplies. Kachuma is the dark blue, and even though we've had a one-hundred percent allocation this year, we have about fifteen thousand acre-feet of Kachuma water stored. We would not use it this year. We would carry it over for use in future years. So this assumes an eighty percent allocation next year and nothing for the following year since there is some uncertainty on what our allocations will be. And then the bottom purple is our recycled water plant. So if we look at the other scenario where demands rebound to pre-drought conditions, what happens is then we have to use our groundwater supplies, and we also rely more on state water. So with continued conservation, with people just keep doing what they're doing, it helps us in the drought recovery. It allows us to rest our groundwater basins, and it preserves our state waters where instead of delivering it to Kachuma, we can send it to those agencies where we owe our water So a summary of our supply outlook, no water shortages projected for the next three years. Kachuma is not full, but allocations may be reduced in a couple of years if dry conditions return. Some of our supplies will take several years to recover. That includes replenishment of our groundwater basins. It includes repayment of water debt that's owed, and then we also have water quality impacts at Gibraltar, which can be uncertain. It really depends on the intensity of rainfall and how the storms come. So with continued conservation, as well as having D-SAL in operation, we will help with the recovery of the long-term drought impacts. And these are the shortages, the shortage levels or stages that are outlined in our water shortage contingency plan. So we have Stage One, which is a zero to fifteen percent reduction in water supply, a Stage Two, which is fifteen to twenty-five, and a Stage Three, which is twenty-five or more. And based on our current water supply situation, we're recommending a Stage One because we do have a full allocation from Kachuma. We don't know what type of water year we're going to have in the next couple of years, but we have, it's really the situation with our other water supplies, with our groundwater and our repayment of water debt, that we want to approach this cautiously and would recommend a Stage One. So if we are no longer in a Stage Three drought emergency, the water use restrictions established in Resolution seventeen dash oh-one-seven can be rescinded. Those were an attachment to the Council Agenda Report. We'd revise it to a Stage One water supply condition, but, you know, if it hasn't been a burden on people, we are recommending that they continue with the actions that they've taken during the drought and really make conservation a way of life, a more permanent, more permanent actions on water use reductions. We do have also waste of water regulations in the municipal code. Those would continue to be enforced at all times. And as for water rates, we did have a rate study that was completed in 2017 that informed rates through June 2020, through fiscal year of 2020, and that study assumed drought would end within the study period, so it already reflected a gradual recovery from the drought in terms of the costs. However, most of our costs are fixed on the water system. We have major capital investments that have been made, and the water system assets need to be maintained even if we're not producing water. So we don't see a lot of change in our costs depending on how much water is used or which source we're pulling it from. However, our rates are structured to encourage conservation, so what that means is the majority of our revenue comes from the volumetric charges that are based on the amount of water used. That's so that people can control their water bill, that if they reduce their water use, they can reduce their water bill, which I think has been really helpful for people in conserving. We have a new rate study that's going to be kicking off in the summer of 2019, and we'll be relooking at all of our projected expenditures and our financial plan. So the proposed rate changes will be coming in spring of 2020, and then for proposed adoption of summer 2020, and we will be looking to minimize any rate impacts going forward. So with that, I will take any questions on the Stage One declaration. I have one more item to discuss, which is the legal services.
Questions? Mr. Rouse, you had your light on first.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Ms. Dyer, so I noticed that we talk about our water budget. Water budget is budgeted as if we were back up in those fifteen thousand acre-foot years where we're down in the nine-to-ten thousand acre-foot. So even with a Stage One drought, isn't it, can't we pretty much anticipate that our water budget is not going to return to those days? I mean, I would think it's with the community support, the infrastructure, and the requirements for certain plumbing fixtures. The new hotels are all water-wise built. I mean, I think it's a good conservative approach, but I think that this, this community has probably changed a little bit culturally as well. So I'm just kind of wondering where, where we anticipate a Stage One drought might take us in terms of that water column. Is that predictable, or are we going to stay with the same kind of system of putting out the fifteen thousand acre-foot budget?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Rouse, you're correct. I don't think that we're going to go back to where we were before and that people will continue to use less water. They have adopted permanent practices, and we're looking at the return just from a planning perspective for consistency with our long-term water supply plan. We will be updating our long-term water supply plan in the coming years to adjust what our demand targets are in the long term, but for right now, all of our policies are based on that long-term water supply plan, so that's what the planning was based on. I think you're correct that it's conservative in terms of the water budget. We don't expect that demands will return.
Mr. Gutierrez?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Do you believe that this will change our water rates at all?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Gutierrez, the change to a Stage One will not change our water rates since our rates were done independently of the drought stage, but we will be looking at any updates to water rates starting this summer. We'll be conducting a new rate study, but at this time, they won't, they're not proposed to change.
Thank you.
Mr. Friedman?
With the change into a Stage One and the allocation of Kachuma going up, could, you kind of hinted, or not hinted, but you talked about it, but could you explain the D-SAL? I know there's some out there who say, well, now that we have more water from Kachuma and state water, that we should be ramping down the D-SAL, but could you explain why it seems we're keeping the D-SAL going so that it's more clear, I guess?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Freeman, yes, the D-SAL is continuing to be in operation. We're still working, we want to make sure we've put it through its paces at this stage, and it's helping to offset the use of our other supplies. So our groundwater basins can be rested. It assures us that we don't have to turn on our groundwater wells, and it also reduces the amount of state water that we would have to import, that that can be used to repay our water debt. And so it is helping with our drought recovery by keeping it in operation.
And I have two other questions. One is, we received a couple emails, I think, on this. It has to do with the change from Stage Three to Stage One in terms of restaurants and offering a glass of water versus upon request. Does that still, is it still going to be upon request, or are restaurants going to be handing out water again?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Freeman, we encourage them to keep doing what they're doing, but we're not going to be enforcing.
So we're just going to be working to educate them to, basically permanently upon request, but it's not a requirement at this time?
Correct.
And then the last one, kind of along the same lines, is the Dolphin Fountain. I know it's more ceremonial, but can you give us an update on whether or not there, we would be turning the Dolphin Fountain back on or keeping it as is?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Freeman, as I understand, the waterfront department is making plans to test the pumps and make sure it's operating correctly, and they're going to be removing any landscaping that's there. So they are making plans to put it back in operation.
You have a section on legal services now?
Yes, and I did want to, I guess, I didn't mention this earlier, but, you know, we're recommending Stage One right now. We would reassess again next spring, the spring of 2020, and if we get another wet year that was as nice as this year, we would be looking to lift it at that time, but we'll be coming back next year to make another recommendation on whether we stay in a Stage One or not. And I believe most of our neighboring water agencies are also contemplating a Stage One as well.
And will you continue to make updates, or how would that work, Mr. Casey?
Yes. Yeah, I think periodic updates. I think we'll pull back a little bit up in frequency, but we'll certainly bring back at strategic times updates, and especially evaluate it as we head into the next winter. That's kind of the next kind of key moment now is what kind of winter we have next winter.
Thanks, Ms. Dyer.
Okay. So the last issue is the Special Counsel for Water Rights. We've had this contract with BKS since 2018 and was later amended in 2014, just as we were going into the drought. And at this time, we are currently seeing a need for additional support, particularly with implementation of our pass-through agreement. So we're requesting an increase for an additional one-hundred thousand dollars for that contract. And so our recommendations are that council adopt a resolution declaring a Stage One water supply condition and repealing Resolution seventeen dash oh-seven, oh-one-seven, and increase the contract for special counsel on water issues.
Mr. Rouse has a question.
Actually, Councilmember, do we have public comment on this item?
We don't, there's a speaker slip?
I'll wait for public comment then.
Mr. Walker, come on up. I'm going to hear from you.
Councilman Rouse, you don't have to wait for me. One quick thought, why don't they just run a small PVC line ocean intake down Sterns Wharf and have the dolphins spout what their environment entails? Okay, you know, like I think Ms. Rebecca Bjork, Public Works Director, said, you'd never know you're in a drought till the first day it starts. So, you know, I feel we're sort of out of the woods, but you just still cannot relax, and certainly feels like dry time right now. Okay. Gibraltar, when it was built, Gibraltar Dam and Reservoir, it was fourteen thousand five hundred acre-feet capacity. By nineteen, oh, let's see, forty-nine, they had to raise the dam about fifteen foot to bring it back to the original capacity. It was down after the Zaka fire to seventy-five hundred acre-feet, and now it's down to forty-five hundred acre-feet, so we definitely have lost the cheapest water capacity. And, you know, maybe we'll get some FEMA money. And the whole thing with the treatment hindrances, why don't you try again to get some FEMA money because the Zaka, or not the Zaka, the Thomas Fire vitrified the adobe clay, I call it gumbo, and it's caused a lot of problems with infiltration into the Ventura Riverbed they found in western Ventura County into their aquifer. So it's caused treatment problems with us and treatment problems and aquifer regeneration in Ventura County. So, you know, you got to work the grants, but we're much better off today than we were the last number of years. And the last time Kachuma spilled, March twentieth, two oh-one-one, when water went over the Bradbury Dam, it was a joyful time, but it seemed like we went into drought real quick after that. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mr. Walker. We'll close public comment then, and Mr. Rouse, you'll be followed by Ms. Sneddon.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, you know, first of all, staff has done a tremendous job this entire time, although we put a few years on Mr. Hagmark since we've made him water czar. Was a young man at one time.
He still is.
Also, but the public, the public really deserves the credit because they've always gone over and above everything we've ever asked. The public succeeded our request for saving water, being, having a desprit de corps to participate in the community good. So I think that's a tremendous statement to what they can do and why I'm not afraid of a Stage One drought and having a problem with going back into further drought based on our use. So, Madam Mayor, what I would like to do is I'd like to move A, B, and then I'd also like to add a C, which is, since it was part of optics and really doesn't take up a lot of water, I would like to move that staff start the Dolphin Fountain back up at the earliest opportunity.
Okay, we'll accept that motion. It sounded like they were moving on the Dolphin Fountain already, but...
Yeah, but I want to take credit for it.
You want to, okay, take, okay. Very good. We have a motion. So Ms. Sneddon, to the motion or to the topic?
Thank you. I want to echo Councilmember Rouse's comments about the really heroic efforts of our Water Resources Division and that diversified portfolio that you've managed, and some go up, some come down, and it's always so... And it's always so, every drop accounted for, and thank you. We've discussed this already, so won't be surprised what I say, but I don't feel like we have enough data points yet to know what next year will bring or the year after that. We've had one season of rain. I really appreciate that you continue to always plan for the dry season coming, even though it's rained. We're not now assuming it's going to be rainy from here on out. So you've already started careful planning for dry and drought conditions. I just want to be so careful with the messaging here that, you know, conservation's just become the new normal. And when you think about a seven-year drought, that's, well, I don't know, our favorite term millennials now, this is what they have come to age with, is not washing cars in their driveways and not expecting to water their lawns in the middle of the day and frankly not used to seeing fountains running around our town. So I'd really like to continue that message of conservation. I think there is, on one hand, there's some fatigue, but for many people, this is just the new normal. If you've already ripped out your lawn and put in drought-tolerant zero scaping, please keep it. This is not the time to now throw that out and put in sod everywhere. And I think, to me, it will be very difficult to see if suddenly we have grass lawns going in everywhere and fountains all over and so many of these things that we've through careful education and really through years now of public outreach brought to be our new normal. And we don't know what the future brings. But we've also discussed, and you shared with me, that we don't want to be crying wolf. If we're not in extreme drought, then that extraordinary conservation, which we want to keep going, we need to hold on to some things for the really dire times. So with that, I would like to make, I won't be supporting exactly Mr. Rouse's. I don't know if there's a way to make it, rather than just repealing the resolution, maybe making it still city recommendations. I feel like repealing altogether sends the message that turn on your spigot and leave it running. And I just want to enumerate the things in there that I really want the public to continue to do. Use self-closing valves, irrigate in the evenings at slow rates, not irrigate 48 hours after rain, continue washing cars and boats in acceptable facilities, not in your driveway, limiting your shower time, hotels not automatically doing laundry every day, restaurants refraining from serving water without being asked, covering your pools. All of those are just good sound practices, even if Kachuma's spilling. Why wouldn't we want that to be how we treat our valuable water supplies every day? So taking out the enforcement and the municipal codes on it, I would like to, rather than repeal it, have it still be official city recommendations, if that's amenable to the council. And for fountains, I think we could do some interesting light features that could make it very activated. I just think it sends a message to the community, if we have fountains running, that that's how we treat our potable water, is just running. And I love the Dolphin Fountain. I like to see it given special treatment, but not with our fresh drinking water.
Okay. Mr. Dominguez?
I have a question, of course, about the special legal counsel. And I wanted to find out more about that. There's not a lot of detail in the agenda report. And is this just someone we're keeping on reserve? Or what exactly are we expecting for our money's worth here?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez, the Barkowitz Law Firm does water rights-related work that it's really helpful to have them in Sacramento to do. So they'll do water rights filings for us and various other coordination with the State Water Resources Control Board. In addition, I believe the major project they're looking at right now is our desire to get some credit for the water that comes out of Gibraltar and moves into Lake Kachuma by virtue of an agreement with the Bureau of Reclamation. Staff may have more.
That's correct. We have, it's originated in the 1989 pass-through, it's called the Pass Through Agreement. And some history on it was that at that time, because of the reduction in capacity at Gibraltar, the city was looking at raising Gibraltar Dam, but it was met with resistance from other interests. And so we were able to find a regional compromise where the city would defer enlargement of Gibraltar Dam in exchange for the ability to store Gibraltar water at Kachuma. And so we have that existing agreement in place. We've been working with the Bureau of Reclamation on the accounting mechanism, and that is what requires what's called a Warren Act contract in order to implement the accounting method. And that's taken some time. And it also requires an environmental process. And so our special counsel has been working with us on the implementation of the pass-through agreement and working on a Warren Act contract as well as other accounting methods.
So are we paying them by the hour? Are we giving them a capitalized fee where the incentive is to get it done as opposed to constantly bill the city? Because when I see we've been working with them for 2008, my thinking goes to where we hire auditors and you want to have a rotation because you want to make sure you're getting the best service, not, you know, the other way around where they're getting a lot of service out of us. So that's why I wanted to flag this in...
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez, that's a good comment. We do pay attention to it. This is one of the more specialized areas of work that we undertake. And as you know, with the support of the council and Public Works Department, we were able to bring Mr. Henchke in, who is himself a water rights expert. So this is definitely work where we need the extra capacity. The hourly rate is 3.25, in case you're interested. It's not outrageous by today's standards, more than I'm sure any of us in the room make, but it's not outrageous, unfortunately.
I'd rather see that go to our local salary, but is that beyond your expertise?
Yes and no. Honorable Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez, the work that is, this is ongoing work, and it has taken a long time to get through the process. And as you know, when you're in the middle of the river, you don't change your horse. And that's really what we're talking about here. If we were to change, I think we would be set back significantly. The billings are frankly very reasonable. The work that is being done by Allen Lilly from the firm has been the minimum necessary to get through. And the other important thing about Warren Act contracts, dealing with the Bureau of Reclamation, is that relationships really matter. And we have a very good relationship built by the team. And to take kind of the quarterback out of the team could result in some significant losses. And so I would not say that I can't do it, but you don't want to change quarterbacks at this point.
Well, we're paying for Tom Brady, so I hope we're getting Tom Brady-like performance. I want to bring the Lombardi Trophy home soon. It's been since 2008. So that's all I'm going to say on that, but let's get that boat in the middle of the stream to its docking point soon.
So Mr. Friedman, next, and to the motion. And if you have a comment on Councilmember Sneddon's list, actually, let me interject. Do you know if the Dolphin Fountain uses potable water or recycled water?
Madam Mayor, it uses potable water. We've looked into recycled water, which would require quite a bit of signage, I think at least four signs around it. And I think there were some concerns about the amount of contact with, you know, children that might be going into the fountain. They can touch it, but they shouldn't be drinking the water. So that was something that was of concern.
There's a representative from the waterfront department who looks like he has something to say. Mr. Treiber, come on up.
Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, Carl Treiber with the waterfront department. Ms. Dyer expressed our concerns exactly. There's a lot of public exposure down there at the Dolphin Fountain. We had considered recycled water a while back and thought it might just be a little more exposure than would be safe for the public. It is potable water, and that's what we would, we're prepared to resume using at council's direction.
Okay. And before we go on then, so Ms. Dyer, the list that Councilmember Sneddon had, are they incorporated in the stage one? Or do you know that? I'm not sure if she emailed you that before the meeting.
It's in the resolution. It is the resolution.
It's there, okay.
Right. They would be rescinded, although we're encouraging people to continue doing them. We won't be enforcing on them any longer.
Okay. So, okay, so I think we understand where you're at. So, Mr. Friedman, then.
I'll be supporting the motion since I seconded it, but appreciate the comments that Councilmember Sneddon had. And just in general, I think our community has stood up and conserved water, I think will continue to do so. And lastly, I do appreciate the explanation on the D cell because I know that's a major issue and the significance of having that during the drought, not only is it getting us through, but also getting us through this next period. So the more we conserve, the less we'll have to use the D cell plant ultimately. So that's another reason to conserve. So I'll be supporting the motion.
Thank you. Ms. Harmon? Oh, then, Mr. Dominguez, your light is, your light is on.
Is there a way to use saltwater like Mr. Walker suggested in the fountain? Change out the pipes or whatever you might have to do?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez, we haven't considered that in the past. We could certainly take a look at it. It would change, we'd have to change the plumbing and fill the moat periodically with saltwater. We do use saltwater for periodic wet downs for fire prevention. So we use saltwater as much as we possibly can out there as it stands. We could look into it. I don't know how feasible it would be, but we could certainly look into it.
Maybe we could make that part of lifeguard training, filling the fountain. And regarding the resolution, I agree with Councilmember Sneddon, we shouldn't throw out all the good parts of the resolution. So what I'd suggest is, can we look into, and I'd be happy to sit down with any or all council members, to look at a new resolution that kind of covers not only what we'd be repealing from 17 that we want to keep, but also just kind of moving forward into the next decade? What do we want residents of Santa Barbara to be thinking as they're using or not using water? What can we do to further incentivize gray water, low-flow toilets? I know we've done a great job, we've had a great program to get people to conserve, but why don't we double down on that now? You know, let's get more grass pulled out by people who want to pull it out and get more drought-resistant gardens. So I think there's probably room to have a new resolution. So I'd throw that idea out if anyone thinks that might work.
But as the motion stands now, Mr. Rouse, you have your light on. It's the staff recommendation, and those items won't be mandatory anymore, they'll be recommended. Mr. Hagmark?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, what we could do is work with the Water Commission and bring back a resolution that reflect, I think, what we've heard today concerning making some of this stuff a strong recommendation. And if that works for the council, we can do that.
Okay. Ms. Sneddon, or Mr. Rouse, I'm sorry, you were first.
Well, just to add the comment, I mean, number one, I do think we've made a cultural change. I don't think we are the same community as before, and we have made some structural changes as well. But the programs that Ms. Ward has going forward, the educational parts, the parts where we do outreach, we go out to people and help them adjust their sprinklers and whatnot, that's all part of the community now. And I don't think we're going back to the days just because we say not to. We've never had to quote-unquote enforce. If you remember, about seven or eight years ago, there was a discussion about having water cops and trying to hire a phalanx of those folks to go around and enforce. Not only was it not ever necessary, we were having a hard time getting people to use enough water to keep the revenue going. So I think we've done a fabulous job. I think staff has done a great job. So I don't, I'm not too worried about making new resolutions and new mandates from up here. I think people are doing their job.
So you don't want to amend your motion to say that the resolution will go back to the Water Commission for refinement?
I think it could come back as recommendations and certainly put out to the public, but I, you know, I think we need to move on.
Okay. So would you, Ms. Sneddon, then? Your light's on.
I was just going to ask that we could segment A, B, and C so that I could vote on them separately. So if I wanted to not vote on the fountain, but that I wanted to support staff's recommendations, I could do that without just a straight no vote.
And that's why they made it as a C motion, so you could do that.
Okay, so it's an individual motion for A, then a separate vote for B, and then a separate vote for C.
We could vote on them separately, sure.
Okay. And then, just, I guess this is a question still that I have, just in the simple language of, is there a way to just have it be resolution number as a recommendation? Or is that even necessary? Well, I'm concerned if it goes back to Water Commission and then we look at longer term and gray water and other things. We already have this really nice list. And the only difference would be is those are our recommendations. It's not enforceable, it's not anything you're going to get fined for. To me, it seemed very simple to just have that be a recommendation to continue with those efforts. But is it not as simple as that? I'm really not in favor of it going all the way back to Water Commission. And, I mean, I think that's a good idea in addition, but I think that that's time-consuming. And since we're not in extreme drought right now, I'm not sure that's where our time needs to be spent on Water Commission. I don't know. I just, that's, I guess, my final thought on that. I don't know what I'd make a substitute motion at this point and just see if there's interest in, rather than repealing the resolution, moving those to recommendations by the city in how we manage water? If there's any second on that.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Sneddon, I hear what you're saying, and I have, you know, I have this share your concerns. Our water conservation program isn't going away. And so we will continue with public outreach and public messaging, and we're happy to incorporate these recommendations into our public outreach and messaging through that avenue as well.
I have every faith that you will and that the messaging will continue. What I'm worried about is a headline that says repealed, that all of these are repealed. It's the word repealed. But if there's not an interest from other members on council, then I just, I will support A and B. I just, and I know your efforts are all for water conservation, that message will get out to the public.
You know, the idea to go to Water Commission was in honor of your concerns, so, but you don't...
It's not necessary.
Okay. Then the motion will stand as it is then? And if you would repeat it, Madam Clerk?
The motion is by Councilmember Rouse, seconded by Mayor Pretam Friedman, to approve staff recommendation, A, adopt by reading of title only a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara declaring a stage one water supply condition and repealing Resolution 17-17; B, authorize the city administrator to amend professional services agreement with Barkowitz, Chronic and Shenahan, Contract 22810, increase the amount by $100,000 for a total contract amount of $300,000 for specialized water rights legal services; and C, to direct staff to start the Dolphin Fountain at the earliest opportunity.
That sounds very clear. If you would take a roll call, please?
Certainly.
We'll do number A first, and if you would do a roll call.
Okay.
A, B, and C separately, please, Ms. Clerk.
This is the vote for recommendation A only, item 18. Councilmember Dominguez?
Yes on A, B, and C.
We're doing A first?
Yes on A.
Yes.
Councilmember Gutierrez?
Yes.
Councilmember Harmon?
Yes.
Councilmember Rouse?
Aye.
Councilmember Sneddon?
Yes.
And Mayor Maria?
Aye. That was unanimous. B, please?
This is item 18, recommendation B. Mayor Pretam Friedman?
Yes.
Councilmember Gutierrez?
Yes.
Councilmember Harmon?
Yes.
Councilmember Rouse?
Aye.
Councilmember Sneddon?
Yes.
Councilmember Dominguez?
Yes.
And Mayor Maria?
Aye. Okay, that's unanimous.
Item 18C, Councilmember Gutierrez?
Yes.
Councilmember Harmon?
Yes.
Councilmember Rouse?
Aye.
Councilmember Sneddon?
No.
Councilmember Dominguez?
Yes.
Mayor Pretam Friedman?
Yes.
And Mayor Maria?
Aye. Okay, was that six to one?
That carries six to one with the no vote as Councilmember Sneddon.
Okay.
And then, may I?
Please, go ahead.
I'm sorry, may I take this opportunity? I suppose I would like to second Councilmember Dominguez's motion to have Water Commission look at if we'd like to have recommendations. So if it's not too late, if I might second that motion. It's a separate.
I think it's too late.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I can make them... So I can, I can make the motion now, there's no, we're still in today's council meeting, so I'm happy to make the motion if...
What's your motion?
To ask the Water Commission to agendize an issue with staff to make a replacement resolution that covers some of the issues we've talked about today in Resolution 17-017, and anything else to move us forward.
But did we just vote unanimously for that?
We're repealing that one. So the idea is to replace it with something to fill the gaps because now we don't have a resolution in place. It might have a few, might have fewer mandatory proclamations in it, but really, there would be then an opportunity for a headline in a few weeks that gives people in the Santa Barbara, where the city that created Earth Day, a chance to say, hey, we're still a city that believes in saving water, conserving, and not wasting this resource.
Let's ask Mr. Hagmark his response to that. What's your feedback on that motion?
I think with or without that motion, we'd be happy to work with the Water Commission and bring back something.
So, Mr. Gutierrez, your light's on? Did you?
Yeah, I have a question. Would repealing or having no resolution, would that allow certain things to pass that regularly wouldn't, when it comes to construction?
Not that I can think of.
Okay.
Okay. Do we, did you get a second?
I seconded.
Okay. Can you read that motion, Madam Clerk? Mr. Rouse, you have a...
A quick comment. I just would like to just remind my colleagues, when it comes to these, to these ordinances and the hammers and the sticks that we have, how often have we actually done anything with them? The answer is not very much at all. You know, we, we haven't had issues with construction, swimming pools along, and we've saved all this water. Our water department does an amazing job of outreach and public education, so I'm not shaking in my boots just because Nick Welsh is out there ready to write this headline tomorrow, so.
Okay. You can vote against the motion then, if you, if you don't like it. So, Ms. Harmon, and then Mr. Friedman, and where did, where did Mr. Dominguez go?
Jason's done.
We'll carry on without him. Ms. Harmon, your turn.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think I, I fall into Councilmember Rouse's camp on this, and I so agree that millennials have lived under this regime to the extent that we can't even conceptualize. I have never washed my car, which I probably shouldn't admit, but I cannot imagine that repealing this ordinance will cause us to change behavior that's become so deeply ingrained. And I think there is something so beautiful about this community, that this is part of how we live our lives. It's central to who we are as Santa Barbarans, and I don't think we have to legislate that. I think that is part of our culture. So I would like to see the Water Commission focusing their attention elsewhere on new issues that might be upcoming, and I trust that if this turns into a problem, if we're seeing folks change their behaviors, that, that we can adopt a resolution that has teeth, that has enforcement options, if that becomes necessary.
Very good. Mr. Friedman?
So are we voting on a new motion or not?
Yeah.
Okay, so then I have a parliamentary question.
A first and a second.
Then I have a parliamentary question on whether we can even vote on that, because we took a vote, and it would need somebody in the majority to take the vote, because we have a resolution, as I understand, of stage-one drought, which has some requirements in it. So the motion was to repeal what we just did. He said repeal.
Mr. Cullen is going to...
He said repeal in his motion.
Madam Mayor, Mayor Pretem Friedman, perhaps the clerk can resolve it. I understood the motion was to work with the Water Commission to prepare a replacement resolution that, while not being mandatory, would express the council's sentiment that maintenance of conservation is a good thing to do. That's what I heard the motion to be.
Well, then, to me, that's just an end-around of what a substitute motion would have been, so I won't be supporting it.
Okay. I think we'll get some diversity of votes here, so if we all know what the motion is, go ahead, ma'am.
I would like to clarify the, the motion. If I might ask the city attorney to repeat your statement just now of the, your understanding of the motion?
Yes, thank you. The motion I heard was that it was a direction to staff, following Mr. Hagmark's suggestion, that they work with the Water Commission to prepare a replacement resolution that, while not being mandatory or punitive in nature, would express the council's desire that the community maintain the water conservation practices it's developed during the last seven years of drought, or eight years of drought.
Very good, thank you. Okay. And so, a motion by Councilmember Dominguez, seconded by Councilmember Sneddon, to direct staff to work with the Water Commission to prepare a replacement resolution that, while not being mandatory, punitive in nature, would express the council's desire that the community maintain its water conservation practices of the past years of drought.
Okay. We'll take a roll call, please.
To that motion, Councilmember Harmon?
No.
Councilmember Rouse?
No.
Councilmember Sneddon?
Yes.
Councilmember Dominguez?
Yes.
Mayor Pretem Friedman?
No.
Councilmember Gutierrez?
Yes.
And Mayor Maria?
No.
That's four to three.
That, that is four to three, with the no votes being from Councilmembers Harmon, Rouse, Friedman, and Mayor Maria.
Very good. That closes this item, I believe, unless you have something else, Mr. Casey.
I just would like to publicly take the opportunity, like a number of you did as well, just that we have a breather to thank the water staff who put so much hard work into an extremely stressful environment over a seven-year period. It was a long haul. They did outstanding professional work. I thank the community for stepping up. I thank the council for meeting monthly on this, but behind the scenes, they did so much work. And since we finally had a little break this winter, I just want to publicly thank them for what has been a very long, hard, and extremely well-done work on their part.
But, Mr. Casey... But they will continue to watch precipitation and our water supply. Some of us are a little nervous about the weather, the climate. Okay, we'll close that item, and I think we should take a five-minute break before the next one. We're in recess?